I'd like to take this time to welcome everyone that came up to the meeting today. This is our regular March business meeting for Milton, Indiana. And we'll start out talking about old business. And I guess first on the agenda, we got the grant money, the forty-four thousand dollars that we paid to Cooley with the arrangement of two more payments in the amount of twelve thousand eight hundred and sixty-four thirty with payoff due for May and twenty twenty-four. So the forty-four was actually grant money that was...
But we could use it for the...
And so then we, we, or having paid the other two payments, this was for that big bill that we had when we went almost all the way to Connersville, cleaning all that out.
That's what it started at?
It started out at sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty cents. So that was a costly cleanup that could hopefully be avoided the next time. Also, our alarm system for the town hall is now complete. The cameras are all installed, everything is in place, the alarms are in place, and we have, do we put some at the fire station, please?
They haven't, we're waiting on them to come in.
All right, they're gonna, they'll put at least one camera at the fire station. Anyway, for this building, it's complete. The, uh... Plans for the voting on the cups for our bicentennial, Dwight, would you want to talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah. There's, like everything, it seems like every day something changes. Basically, with the cups, we're looking at, a lot of people want sharpshooter cups. So we've got two versions, well, we've got one version of sharpshooter cup. It's gonna be maroon. One side, we're gonna have the actual sharpshooter, with the gun, which I wasn't happy about, but everybody wants it. So, and on the other side of the cup, we're gonna have the sharpshooter shooting a basket into the hoop. So on the cup's gonna have two logos on it. So if you're left-handed, you're gonna see one thing, right-handed, you're gonna see something else. But they're both gonna be maroon and done in a gold color. Our plan is to put out a list, try to get response from citizens on how many cups they want, because the more cups you buy, the cheaper it is for us to buy the cups. So that's gonna start here probably in the next week or two.
Do you basically know how much they're gonna cost?
Right now, um... The cost varies so much. Okay. If you buy twelve cups from the printing, it's over two hundred dollars. As we get into higher volume of cups, it's gonna get a lot cheaper. And so that's where we need numbers, how many people wants a cup, so we can plan for it.
And they'll be a nice souvenir to have.
And... So we need to take a vote on the cups that we proposed with the logos right now. Need a motion, I can take a motion. It'll be a bill, the what they will, in, in, yeah, both cups.
We can have a motion. All approved. Aye. Motion carried. Okay, that's, you got the left cup. All right. Further, uh, old business, as of March third, the closing was on the property of one thirteen East Main, so, uh, the new owner is Sandra, who knows? And that's a closed deal. The property on South Street has been making a lot of improvements, a lot of improvements, and everything is, everything's gone now but the trailer itself. And they came this week and cleaned the yard up pretty good. So, all we got now is just remove that trailer and then we'll deal with them about, you know, how many trailers will be coming back or whatever the deal will be on that.
I sent an email to, um, Joe, and he said that we have to change the ordinance if we want it to be ten years or less.
Our ordinances are outdated for mobile homes, but those that are already here are considered grandfathered in. But as far as bringing in new mobile homes, they'll have to meet, I mean, they don't have to be brand new, but they'll have to meet expectations.
He said that he has property down there for three trailers, lots six, seven, and eight.
And the others don't have sewage hooked to them. If they're, if they're, he originally said five, but we know, we know there aren't five sewers hooked up. I thought there were only maybe two, but he said three.
Well, that's what, it says, D and J Home owns four homes in Milton, and there's three going in there, three of them.
And so before we settle on that, we'll have to get together and decide what the rules are.
Yeah, because in the ordinance, it's pretty far along.
And they're pretty small, in the ordinance. So you sent, you did, you sent a letter to our attorney to, uh...
I actually just sent him a, a letter stating that we need something drawn up before they move in.
With the expectations, yeah.
Yeah, and he told me that we need to revisit our ordinance because it's not a ten-year base limit, it's beyond that.
So we do need to address that, we need to get together on that. All right, the next would be that picture of the, uh, this is the picture. This is what the lift station collected near, out near Nick Elders, in that area out there. This is just a mess.
It's the same stuff.
We've got it, even if it says biodegradable, that doesn't mean it's biodegradable. Baby diapers and baby wipes and sanitary products are not really biodegradable. It just takes, yeah, you know, maybe a hundred...
By the, uh, where Nick Elder lives, there's a red house there, just right before it, there's a lane that goes back to the, one of our load stations. That's where that came out of.
Yeah, this kind of stuff's collected, and that's why we got that sixty-six.
Well, that'll serve like fifteen people.
Yeah. So, a few people are messing it up for a lot of people.
So there's only fifteen residents, if their sewage goes into that.
To that one.
That one area, that's a substation. And then it goes from there, it's pumped into the main station that goes to Connersville.
Which is on Canal Street.
Yeah.
So having said that, we'll move on, that's something for us to think about. Um, is there any more? Is there any more old business before we move into the new? Janet, you have any old business?
I don't know if it's old or what. I know somebody mentioned last meeting about the toilets, like, the issue with that, I didn't know where we were staying with that.
No, we're staying with that.
We're staying with that.
What I said is what we're doing, and there are a...
So then we turn the sewer back on for those residents? And how many of you were there?
Four that we know right now.
So, so sewer, and back on, and that's as of what?
The day after the meeting.
So that's, or last month, or last month.
They went out with cards this month.
Okay, so we've got, but it was updated on their March billing?
Dwight, do you have any old business?
No.
You have any, Sid?
No, sir.
I don't, any, no. All right, so we'll move on to new business, and at the top of the new business list, we're gonna be talking about the Milton bicentennial plan. We'll throw it back to Dwight, what we've got so far.
Yes. One of the things we need to decide on is timing, what time, are we gonna start in the morning? Ten o'clock, eight o'clock? Just so we can make people aware, like, we bring in a vendor or something?
I don't care, when we start? Three, that's good.
Start at nine? And that covers that.
Till what? After fireworks? Nine, a question mark?
We're gonna do fireworks though...
On the fifth?
On the fifth, aren't we?
Fireworks will be on the fifth, yeah.
And this would be on the sixth. So we start at nine on the sixth.
I thought it was, I think it was the Sunday one.
Sixth is Saturday, the fifth is, nobody would show up, we get in there, try to... Unless people would show up.
This is the sixth?
This is the sixth, this is Saturday. So, right now, we have the following speakers that will speak. Mary Ferris will talk about John Bell, because he planted Milton, John Bell, and there's a connection to the Ferris family. So she will speak to that. Kathy Vanderweer has been an avid person, others, looking at the canal. So she'll speak about the canal and how did the canal influence the growth of Milton, for industry and so on. Philip Plum will be here, he will be our only political person at the moment, or a former political person, that can speak, because he was, he did represent this area at one time. The, uh, one senator, uh, he is, he, basically, right now, he's a no at the moment, but he could be influenced by someone else from Milton to make him show up on Saturday, because she knows him very well. And she helped him get to where he's at. So we'll see how that works. We may actually have a, a Republican senator here, and that's a question mark at the moment, whether he'll be here or not. Other things going on is Terry Blair, who works for the post office. She's working on getting a stamp for Milton celebrating two-hundred-year anniversary. She has the artwork in her hands, so she's trying to push that forward, so we can get a special stamp to look at Milton, which is good. And those are, those are the main speakers. We have Scott Ross for music, but he has a limited time that he can be here. He has to be out of here before eight o'clock.
P M?
P M. Because he has another place to go.
So when, when will he start? I mean, are you gonna put him on there for two hours?
We can put him wherever we want, we can start him at two o'clock, or we can start him after...
But he has to go at, play somewhere else, I would give him first.
Yeah. I mean, because what we found is, we're too late to the game. Everybody else has been booked a year in advance. I even went to World Glo to look at who they had that did things for stuff like this. They're not available. Every place we go, it's too late, so we gotta make the best of what we got. Unless we find someone that can do more things. There was actually a lady who, they presented stuff when we did the gazebo, she probably would have been here, but she's already committed to Kansas City. Because everybody's celebrating Fourth of July in that week. So, and that's kind of our loss, we're not looking about this probably a year ago, but how many people a year ago knew that Milton's gonna be two-hundred years old? Didn't seem like many people knew that. I brought it up at the first council meeting, so, so we have that. It's to be a parade. We plan on, we want people to provide us with photos of all the military veterans, so we can scan it into the computer, put it up on a monitor, and have it constantly running, so you can see who all the veterans are from Milton. And some of them maybe didn't live here, but they were born here, and then as they got older, then we've gone. So we have all those to look at.
Is the parade gonna start everything off at nine A.M.?
Yeah.
Wish that could break on line up for the parade.
Hardy, hardy. No, I'm just kidding.
They could line down on the cemetery drive.
We have to, yeah, I mean, those are the, those are the fine details that, once all the stuff gets off of the current plot up here, we need to talk.
It's not gonna happen.
Not gonna happen. So they're here through the summer.
And next year.
Alternative location then, okay.
Do we want to have a little jumping place with kids over there?
I don't know.
Is, and as far as... Of the cups that we've talked about earlier, all those proceeds will go to new equipment for the new park. That's the ideal. Reaching out to people, um, one of the things we're reaching out to with a big mailing list is, when we did the gazebo back in two thousand and ten, we did a total rural, we include the township as well as people in Milton. We have more people out of the township show up and give large donations than we give some of the people in town. That's how we got to gazebo. So we're not, those people are really, they're Milton, even though in Washington Town, we're all in Washington Township. So we're all the same. So, we're gonna cover about five hundred people of mailings, and the mailing cost is like ten, fifteen cents per document. We got figured that's about a hundred dollars, all we got. And then I'd like to throw things out that, this is where things started, this logo, Milton, Indiana. The guys went past these around, so they can see. This all started with maybe looking at a shirt or something? But, we didn't pursue that because, how many sizes do you have to have, how many do you have to order? This may be good for like, if you have something you want to put it on, either like a little canvas bag, they can do that at the printing. All the artworks there, we're just not using it. But that's something we can let them, we can take an amount, if you want certain things, we can pursue that as well, if you'd like. Those would be quicker, those could be done in a matter of days. Cups are gonna be about six weeks, so we can't wait too long before we order cups.
So we have... We're gonna mail out flyers for the cups?
Yes. We're already mailing out the post office right now, which is challenging.
You're gonna like that mass mailing?
Yeah. We can do five hundred, actually, you can do a thousand if you want, for certain price ranges, like five hundred between Washington Township and Watson Milton residential wise. Everyone's got a mailbox, we'll get this flyer. And when we look at what we did at the gazebo, majority of donations came from the township. You got a lot of farmers out there that's very proud to be in Milton. So, and we're probably gonna be hitting people that, if they don't get Western Way News, we don't have publicity in the paper...
I'm gonna put it on...
Reach Alert.
In Reach Alert.
Reach Alert. I know Western Way Doon has done great work for us, getting things out there, you know, Jenny and I have talked a little about what to put out there, so we gotta keep that rolling, keep everybody aware of what's happening.
Whatever Jenny puts in the paper, the radio's gonna tell it.
And just to let you know, and I volunteered my wife to do some research, and we're still married.
So far.
Yeah. I mean, she came up with this here from the library, there was actually a train station next to Methodist Church on Walnut. I didn't know that, no one in town ever told me that.
Say that again, please.
There was a, a train station?
It's a depot.
Like right there, next to the Methodist Church on Walnut. And it was torn down in nineteen forty.
You know where that empty lot is, right across the street from the church, where a lot of them, when it was active, were parking? That's where it was.
It's interesting as you get into it, what's fine.
Did you like Bill Scott, what's their Christian church?
I've tried to connect with him, but I keep connecting him, and he's not, he's working that day, so we got to...
As I said, we got a lot of issues with the original church.
That one, bro.
Mom, 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 and Shirley probably has to make sure.
So, as we start, like, separate handling for veterans, we need that separate building for an hour, and have that on there, and then, my goal would be, is after we get all this gathered, we could actually maybe have them put on DVDs, if people want a copy, we could send copies of the CD. Amanda's wife the other day, and she's somebody who, so that's why they... So, but, this is all work in progress, it's moving forward, um... I've got a lot.
Dwight brings us probably...
My problem is I have a mouth. Yeah. Well, I think this is, this is one little lifetime thing. So we will be seeking volunteers. Nobody needs to worry about it. Gotta have a name and a phone number here. But no, it's, it's interesting on how Milton developed. That's, unless anybody has a question, I'll turn it back over to the, Phil.
This, this is all in the making, and so, you know, we're still on the process. Okay, we'll move on with our new business then. I don't know if any of you noticed, I know some of you did, that we put the no parking back in front of the old clerk's building, and, uh... We just don't want any semis parking there anymore, and, and we, we can't have them on, like, River Street. River Street is no trucks anyway, but I mean, they have a fifteen-minute unloading period if you have a truck on River Street. But East Main has a, has a, they're, they're allowed the trucks to travel through, but no parking. So, that's been kind of questioned a couple times, but the, the original sign was fifteen minutes parking, but, you know, what's the difference? If it's, it's no trucks, it's no trucks. But I mean, anybody can, they can unload, like, if you have furniture delivered or something, you know, they're gonna give them time for that, but this is like, you know, parking for overnight and things like that, with, we were having somebody park next to the playground, that was a complete safety hazard. And then we have a handicapped child that lives near one thirteen, and so that, you know, that was just not gonna work. So, there will be, you know, normal parking. All right, uh, we'll move on now to, that, that parking was also at ordinance chapter seventy-three of the parking schedule, so we didn't really have to update that one. All right, now we're gonna move on to, uh... Oh, this, are you the lady with the tree?
Yeah.
Trees, trees?
Yeah.
Do we wanna talk about that? So Jacob's not here?
He's still working.
Okay. So what, you wanna tell us anything about it before we...
They are on the easement that's undated, and we just don't want the same thing to happen from the other side.
How many trees are we talking about?
There's two, they're pretty large.
So, we'd have to make a decision on whether to decide actually to go through with it or not, wouldn't we?
I received, we, well, have received one quote, and we're still trying to reach out to more.
This quote was for, this quote was for, what, four thousand? Is, was that just trimming or removal?
That's just taking it down.
And Teddy Lambert said that he would, he would take whatever woods available, so the woods already will be taken care of, but it's just, we'd like to get about, when we decide what we're gonna do, we'd like to get about three estimates, so we can have our pick with, you know, what's the cheaper way to go for the town. That you don't have a picture or anything that we could share? Did he have, did you say he had a, what is it?
Assess.
Assess or...
A survey?
Survey?
Mm-hmm.
You got a picture of the survey?
Yeah. Has it worked? That, was this to take it down or trim it up?
Take it down, put the fresh grass.
Okay. And you say that the trees are on an undated property?
Yeah, I went down to the courthouse in Richmond and spoke to them. And we also paid the thousand dollars to the survey company to have them come out to tell us it's also undated.
So I'm guessing it's undated.
Okay, yeah. Pretty, pretty keen to find out.
I'm not finding the copy of the survey in here, but I have it at home, I don't know.
So, do we wanna table this?
I would, because I'm gonna still gotta get two...
We want two more estimates before we move on anything.
Yeah. And I can bring a copy of that survey up here.
Okay.
I just can't...
Okay, we'll, we'll look at it, and then... The town, if it's undated, is that probably what you... Yeah, okay. All right, we got, we've got Scott here, if you've got anything you need, tell us about the fire department.
I gave, uh, guys last two months of a fire number, and, uh, I also turned in a copy of estimate for a new light. We used to have an overhead light over the bank, just for security and all that, they got blown off during a storm, so I got an estimate for a new light. One's just for a big light, dusted on light that you put up there, it's a hundred and seventy-seven dollars, and the other one is possibly maybe put a light over each big door, that's priced for three lights. That came straight from Kirby Rescue Foundation.
So, that would be... So, that would be, we would pay half that?
It would get to it. It would be the.
You down?
None of this.
Oh.
They're gonna go with the one seventy-three, thirty-four instead of getting all of them.
Okay. And then we would still just have to pay half of that?
That's, it's also for security reasons too.
So do we, do we need to make a motion to, do we need to vote on that amount, or?
Do we have?
It's pretty cheap. Half of that?
That'd be probably all of it. Because he just handed this to me. That I'll check. This is the forty thousand dollars that was never turned in in November.
We just got that. So that's split in half with township, though.
And township will be broke?
If you wanna hold on to that, that's fine.
Let's hold off on the light.
Let me talk to Ken.
And we've been training our new guys with the new air packs we got, and they're outstanding, we love them, so that's one good thing. We're starting to train them with some, a couple million houses we got. So far, it's pretty good down there.
How many people in the roof there?
Nine, I believe. Yeah, yes, I'm not sure I showed up. And I do got a little bit to do there. Tainted the water, I had my new service line put in. I've got more pressure than I ever have.
We do too.
The water is pretty little clear, and I'm, I'll drink right out of the tub. I don't have an issue with it.
I don't live that far.
I've always been, garden hose crazy, so I'm drinking out of the garden hose, but I think the water does.
It, it does help the pressure a lot.
It does, and the guys have been doing outstanding job on my house, but the water, I couldn't believe it. I enjoy it. I don't have a problem drinking it.
They're, they're very professional, and they've been doing a real good job.
I'm very pleased with that.
They got theirs done today. Were they good for you? Were the guys doing your water, were they, did they do a good job?
Didn't do ours today. They just come to the house today.
They didn't do it today?
No.
I might have misunderstood.
Probably tomorrow.
Okay. You'll like it. They're really nice.
It's a big improvement.
Well, we're here until. You should've spoke earlier. I would've brought you beef and noodles.
That's all I got this time.
Okay. Now, what, it says Bruce will be in training from March twelfth to March fourteenth.
Yep, he's in French Lick.
He's in French Lick right now, so. All right, next on the agenda was Anita Duddy had a place on the agenda, but I don't see her here tonight.
She is very concerned about the property at one oh seven East Walnut with all the.
As, as I am.
Yeah, with all the debris that's in the front and backyard, she's concerned about the property depreciation, so.
As I am.
Can you name those?
No.
Got you.
I'm sure. What have we done, Tom? What have we done about?
That, that property has previously been addressed, so it sounds like maybe it just needs to be readdressed, and.
It's not happening. I mean, nothing's happening.
Yeah.
The contract votes even back.
It, it was a busy month for us in terms of addressing those kinds of issues specifically, and we'll, we'll put that on the list and go back out and readdress it.
And we also had an issue with, and I, Joy, I've heard of, there are chickens on somebody's property. I hear a rooster crowing sometimes.
I've heard of it.
And we, we have, there are no animals, there are no.
Hillhoofs, right?
We've got an animal ordinance, and, and somebody's violating the animal ordinance.
It's, um, right on here. I've got the address.
There are possibly chickens and goats.
What is the animal ordinance?
The ordinance is that the only thing you can keep, if your kids are in four H, the only thing they could really raise might be rabbits. Any other animal considered like, not dogs and cats, farm, yeah, farm, not dogs and cats. Although the dogs and cats need to be addressed.
Yeah.
There aren't as many dogs around the loose as there used to be. The cats are everywhere.
Pretty much farm animals, chickens.
Yeah.
Goats, horses, pigs, cattle.
I have a question. Do you guys have an ordinance on trash cans being pulled back to your house?
That, it's just a courtesy thing, you know?
There's no ordinance?
There's, there's no real ordinance, but if it's not, if they're not, if it's not in a trash can that best way approves, they won't pick up your trash anymore.
Yeah, I just didn't know. You could just leave your trash can at the road.
But that's probably not for the people. I, I wouldn't, but.
Can you guys make an ordinance for that?
We can work, we can work with it, but that's pretty nippy, because some people don't have any place else to put theirs except right in front.
No, I mean, they're saying, like, by the way, we're.
Oh, they should be pulled back from the road.
No, it's never moved, ever. Guys have been a lot. I've noticed a few around town, I mean, but.
I thought they wasn't pulled back. They're not supposed to pull them out till these twelve hours really get picked up or something? Oh, really?
I thought there was something.
Yeah, they're not supposed to be set out until. Till they're away from the road. Uh-huh.
Yes, if I may say something, I think that the ordinance says the trash cow, trash can is to be removed from the street by midnight of the night of trash pickup.
I think she's right.
Yeah.
I think that it's in there. So if that is happening, it could be a violation.
Different nation of the.
Is a guinea bird kept for its eggs, meat, or feathers found, including bald ortho bird, following clues but are not limited to the wild. Turkeys, chickens, goose, and roosters.
So they're in violation?
Yeah.
The chicken people are in violation.
For two years?
For two years?
I think it's an issue of laws that would cross street for me.
Yeah, we have people behind us with a duck and a chicken.
We've got home acquired stock animals, including horses, cows, goats, pigs.
Philip?
Uh-huh.
You talked about that ordinance, about stuff piled everywhere. If you're gonna enforce it a one, you have to enforce it a lot.
We're working on it.
Okay, but I see one person just keeps putting more and more and more out. I know it's a business, but still, it's a eyesore.
Well, it's, it's, well, it's the wording of the ordinance that we're working on right now, because the wording of the ordinance has let certain people get by with things.
Because it, you know.
Because junk was considered a scrap iron, scrap metal.
That's the only thing that's in the ordinance.
Well, I love how many, and I like to see it clean. I, I hate trash piled around the house, or junk cars without tags on it, because I know there's some kind of ordinance against having these junk cars without tags on them.
Tom and the guys have been working on it. They've been working on it.
Okay.
It says right here in the ordinance at fifty-two oh five, trash pickup notice, that the trash can be set out at seven AM. They pick mine up at five.
Yeah, they're coming earlier.
So that's kinda.
They did on heavy trash, they do, way earlier.
Yes, and then they do that.
Yeah, they set it out at seventy-nine.
You show me all.
I had to take it back. I called, and she said. Okay, so our next item we'll talk about is the getting more people signed up for the reach alert. And it seems that there are still some people that aren't on reach alert, and, you know, Agnes has put it on several different times. But we'll put it on again, and then we'll have directions in here.
If I set it out on a reach alert, you're not gonna get it.
So, if, if, you can come in here and sign up for reach alert.
Okay. I think they send out like all the.
But I said she's had it on Facebook several times.
Oh, yeah, I know that.
Oh, I don't live on that, on Facebook.
So probably a reach alert would be nice, and it is very easy.
And it'll show up on your phone or your computer.
The good thing about it is.
The butt life shows up on both.
With all the construction that's going on, and if they shut the water, say they shut the water down on this side of Main Street, I don't have to send it out to the whole town. I can pick Main Street.
Yeah.
Okay.
Send a reach alert to those people, they'll, while the shit's on.
I might if I want to.
Okay. Okay, now also, going back to our bicentennial celebration, we're planning a boot drive to be held on March twenty-third, weather permitting. And we're thinking about the hours like between eight to two.
That's for the park.
Eight to two, or some, and this is for the.
The park.
For the, yeah.
Eight to two?
Eight to two is what we were talking about, and it would be, would, anybody can volunteer to be in the boot drive.
I didn't get a time. You can.
Eight to?
I guess.
Sure.
You said that means.
I didn't write it down.
I just had eight to two written down.
Uh, sure.
You already said the sign that everybody's supposed to report this time, right?
Yes, I know, if we are. Even if I have to color them with a crayon.
I'll see that.
All right, now we're gonna talk about what the, the wall for the sign at the park, at the new park. Who's gonna talk about that?
Uh, it feels like him. Um, we had a meeting last week, the park board did, and we talked about that wall, and we've got some donations of material from Heather, her boyfriend. And it looks like we can get a ten by thirty wall put up for about four hundred dollars, and they've thanked me around that. Yeah, I talked to Pam and Mary both. They're fine with that, and it's just kinda up to you guys to make the decision where you wanna go forward or not.
And so what kind of wall is it, this thing? Five hundred?
It's metal. Metal with a.
This is gonna have to be more than four hundred, though, because it will need the backing, like a plywood backing, um, like a treated wood, so that it no baa in the wind. That's the best way to spray that, you know what I mean? A baa. Don't make me do it, yes. And then it will need some, um, I left it, it'll need some two by fours and four by fours to, yes, to frame it up, to make it more sturdy.
For the, for the steel part, it'd be.
Then the steel would get.
Be attached to that.
Attached to that, yeah, and then the steel actually is what would be painted on, and first it would have a, um, paint that is, um, would go on, kinda like a primer paint for metal. And then she would paint her mural, and then she would finish it.
We would have to prime it, and then they would paint over that.
Yeah.
Ten or thirty?
Each metal sheet is ten feet by, right at, um, a little over, right under four foot, actually. It's like inches, I don't know. So right at four foot, ten by, right at four foot is each sheet. So, yeah, would be like two, two panels, and then two panels, and the wall could be however big, and it could, I guess it could even be staggered if people wanted to walk through. It's not really been discussed.
Where's it gonna be put?
It'll be where the, the new, the new park.
I know in the new park, but whereabouts?
Is it gonna go in the front?
It could go in the front, it could go in the back, it could go in the middle. I can't levitate.
But the park's gonna be fenced in, right? And get a loft, and have a loft on it for.
No, it's gonna have posts and then the little, like, um, corner sill.
There'll be a fence around the basketball and the pickleball, and, but then the others, there'll be posts with chains or cables between them, so there'll be no parking.
Parking, yeah, that's one of those ones, yeah.
Heather, on your treated lumber drawer?
Mm-hmm.
Go to my store, cart lumber, talk to the manager, and you might be able to donate the lumber for that.
Of course.
And you're gonna have a lot of the posts.
I'll put a word in to tell me about it. I have time, I'm late.
Thank you.
So basically tonight, we just need to cancel to decide a new form.
If we're gonna do it with that Pamela, Pamela Bliss would be the one that actually paints the mural, and she wants to know with it.
What's she painting?
That is still up to, to decide too. It's just a decision, and then we kinda will tell her what we want. I definitely think that it should have, um, maybe it could have like the old bridge that we used to have, and like it could even have one of the cars that Milton used to build, we used to build car. I think sharpshooters should probably be on it somewhere.
Well, that, last, the mill.
Yeah.
That's fine, all, all kinds of stuff, like.
That was established and new establishment.
That kinda stuff, yeah, it's up to the site still.
The same, Tam is the same lady that paints.
She just needs the permission to, um, say, yeah, okay, put us, put us on your agenda to paint it in a couple months.
So we wanna do that before we get to actual playpark and school, or do we wanna wait until we get to playpark where we wanna?
It would be put in around at the same, it would all happen around the same time.
We'll have to do it on their schedule as far as the painting.
Yeah.
The park, we just have to hurry, do it as quick as we can on that.
So then I need to tell Lykins and S L B to get their stuff off the property?
Uh, we'll see.
Yeah, we'll be in about a month, month.
Month, yeah.
If you're also gonna do the treated metal, you gotta keep in mind, you need to put something between the metal and treated, 'cause the metal will actually eat the treated lumber.
That metal is coated.
It don't matter. You need to put like a, on a.
Like a thin insulation?
No, it's a, it's a seal.
Why, like, we just, like, spray foam?
No, what I'm saying, it's a flat seal seal, that's what they usually put down when they're building homes. They'll put some concrete block, and they'll also put the treated on top of that. Well, metal and treated, there's a chemical reaction that will ruin both of them actually. So if you get the seal seal, it's a real thin piece, insulation like. You can do three and a half inches up to eight and a half, or seven and a half inches, depending on how wide you want it. You need to put those between the two, they'll keep the barrier.
Okay.
So is Carter Lauren gonna donate that too?
She's asking?
Okay, thanks.
I, like I said, I'll bring Tony to Scott's.
Yeah, Scott's.
I'll have Tony though.
He's gonna put it up too.
I know. I'll probably deliver it too.
Deliver it and do it.
And while we're on the subject of the playpark, um, did we decide to put, remember the sign that was on the top of the old bridge? That we wanted to put back up, but we've thought about putting it, locating it on the playpark, and maybe make it, build it on a stone.
If I knew a mason or somebody that could lay the, I would like to see it brick.
Yeah.
I'd like to see it put, inlayed in brick.
Yeah.
Jake can, Jake has a mason. He built walls for Kenny and us. So you're gonna donate his time?
If we're trying this.
We're totally donating, he's really good.
You'll make me more.
Yeah.
Well, one more thing on the park, patronity kicks off on the nineteenth, so everything's set to go then.
What's, what is it?
The patronity, the fundraising for it. We've gotta raise fifty thousand, that last fifty thousand.
And it's March nineteenth?
March nineteenth, there we go. There'll be a press release, it's done now. Lieutenant Governor will have a press release.
Kicks off on what day?
Nineteenth.
Nineteenth.
Is he doing that here?
No.
All right, and then next on the new business, the discussing of a bicentennial flag. Would that be like designing a flag for the town?
Yeah.
And we have an art student that'll help us with that.
I picked her.
After we just, have we decided?
No, she wants to know what we'd like to have on the flag.
So that'll be something we need to.
Well, I got a call just before coming here from Mike up the, he feels like. Well, I got a call just before coming here from Mike up the, he feels like the mill that we have on the cut should be on the flag. And also, one of the sharpshooters should be on the flag.
One sharpshooter?
The same thing would apply for the bicentennial banner that goes across the line. You would do the same thing, be consistent.
What about canal? Canal? You gotta sign up, they're saying, canal down.
Right. Well, yeah.
What about the mill, groups of that?
Unless you got a canal boat, or on there.
No, that, no.
I mean. There's a club of that. There's a group that studies the canal, and I only gotten one of them on your tour, and see if they have any photos or sketches.
She gave us, she came to a meeting.
Oh.
I've been with her. I've been on her, in the state, Miss Allo. That was last year.
Before my death.
That little book that's at the library had a picture of the, of the building and the old bridge down here too. It was interesting. Okay, number twelve on here, what's this approval to pay?
Yeah. More money. S L B wants pay.
And that's for?
Um, the guys that are going around putting stuff in the houses. Is that this reason? Yeah, those guys.
That's a hundred and fifty-four thousand, five hundred thirty-two dollars and eighty-two cents.
So I talked to Whitney and Mike Klein Peter today, and what I'm gonna propose is we let Mike Klein Peter take care of it. He's usually just taking, he says he just takes care of the S R F, but he's willing for approximately six thousand dollars that would come out of our grant to make sure that they get paid. Like, he sends me a receipt, I sign it, send it back, he pays it. I don't have to worry about it. So I just need approval to have him go ahead. He said between five and seven thousand.
Is that five percent, does it still come out great money?
Yeah.
Do we need to vote on that?
You just need to tell me if I can pay it.
Make a move.
All in favor? Aye.
So we're gonna do that with the grant?
Yeah.
Take the money from the grant?
We'll still have, if I can find my stuff, I can, like. Oh, right here. We'll still have approximately thirty-nine thousand left over. And that thirty-nine thousand is gonna go to buy whatever reeds are left, reeds meaning the levers, whatever those are left, and then the money that's left over from that, we can do what we want with it. Perfect, but it has to go with water. And then they've already put our application in for the second half. We're just waiting.
All right.
So is Mike Klein Peter, is it okay to have him do it?
Yeah, we.
And you voted on it, thanks.
It was unanimous.
Who did it?
The wife and.
Boy, voting, we probably need to vote on doing that wall. And I care about the street, I just didn't know they voted on it.
So, uh, do we have a motion?
For the wall.
For the wall with the mural? Motion made.
All second.
Second. All favor, aye, aye.
I just think it might just be at like, maybe like, I know she has to, she's gonna pop it on the long list, but you might put it somewhere where it might not, like, maybe, like, since you don't have it.
I'm just sure, I wanna, she can paint it, lay it on the ground at her house, and then we can erect it here. We don't, she don't have to paint it out in the middle of that grass.
So then, does she know where, how everything's set up over there, if you wanted it?
We can do it at a different, we'll decide where it gets set up later.
Right, so, or you just do, so what's the backside of the wall gonna look like?
It'll just be like a solid color.
Black on the back.
Like a solid color.
On the backside of the metal?
On the, on the rear side, um, like, yeah, it'll be painted. The treated lumber will be painted, like, we can just paint it like with a gallon, it could take about a gallon of paint. And probably like, I don't know, white or black or purple, I don't know.
I prefer purple, so it's a better color.
Maybe I'll do my own homemade sketch on the back. I'll be bubble art.
Probably once painted, you probably third color, like, put on a lot of color. And that's gonna protect it.
Is that like, they haven't outlined it, like, polyurethane and stuff that you can.
It'd be nice, so it'll last a little longer, because I forget what she told me, that was me. A lot happens with.
The what?
Ryan Way.
It's a little much.
'Cause you can even paint it again in a couple years.
Yeah, 'cause of what's the price you pay for that Ryan Way? Yeah, it's all right.
All right, we're moving on then. We have decided to, uh, place an ad in the Western Wayne News for a water operator. And it's to be an apprenticeship served for the town, because it's gonna take a few years for someone to actually, we're not replacing anybody or firing anybody, but we're getting an apprentice.
He's ready, he wants to retire.
Just, yeah. Someday, some people are gonna be retiring. And, uh, we're gonna move along with placing this ad to get an apprentice. And hopefully somebody will be with us for the long run. And I don't think we have to vote on that, do we? 'Cause you and I are.
No, I just gave it to her. Okay, I have one quick note, real fast. I wanna congratulate Mr. Marshall back there. He finished his drug recognition, recognition expert. When'd you get home?
This weekend.
Then today I had a meeting with, uh, sorry to cut it short right there, this is like kinda rude. Um, I had a meeting with Centos about the A E Ds, because none of them work. They're in the building and they feel like it just look pretty. They don't work. So I'm really kinda shocked when I look at this number, because everybody told me all the batteries are about ten thousand dollars. I had no idea.
I have a clue.
So for six A E Ds, that's two at the fire department, two here, one for the, um, patrols, and then one for, and that with the new cabinet. And two to go over to the garage, since our guys are getting a little older. Just saying. Um, monthly inspection to make sure the unit is functioning properly. If the unit is used, we replace, they replace the pads as soon as possible. A thirty-six month agreement, it's just a lease. We don't own them, we lease them. And trading all of ours in that we have right now, which is only four that do not work, we're gonna get a hundred and ten dollars in for the trade and credit. And those six will cost seven dot hundred dollars and eighty-three cents.
A month?
No.
Oh.
Yes, I won. A month. But to buy them, and we have to have them.
So, it's how much, seven hundred dollars and eighty-three cents?
A month. And that's including all six.
So two for the fire department, two for the garage.
Two for the garage and two for here.
One for the office and one police. Does the police have to need now?
Who got one's broken?
Yeah, the, the, the batteries are dead. They have a life of ten years. He looked, the gentleman that was here, Chad, he looked at all four, 'cause Jasper brought the fire departments down here, and they're all outdated.
So is Centos the only one that does that, or?
Centos can give you the, um.
Leagues.
They can give you, they can give to you on a lease. Without having to come up with a huge chunk of money to buy six. I don't know, I didn't know who else to go to.
If you're buying, you own them, then you're gonna be responsible for.
Then we'll just, we, we own these.
Replace them all out yourself.
So we're gonna have to replace the battery if we're not.
I don't know the exact price, but they're not, yeah, they're not cheap, but they're not ten thousand dollars either.
You get told.
We replaced them before they were out. We replaced them before, so.
And long run's cheaper to buy Centos.
Than what?
It's cheaper to buy Centos than the long run.
Does cheaper to go with them than to buy them? Because they have a date.
That's a three-year term, a three-year contract?
Yep, three, thirty-six month.
And they can maintain and moderate it.
And that's monthly inspections also, to make sure that they're.
For seven hundred, they should be more inspected.
Just don't use them.
Yeah. We hang around so they can use them.
Two cases? That's all new. I just didn't.
But is Centos the only company that does that?
Yes.
I have no idea.
Fastenal does it.
Who?
Fastenal.
Should we look into?
We should look in.
Compare also the quotes.
Yeah, of course.
This, he said that this was a deal because, everybody says it's a deal.
Yeah.
Everybody says it's a deal. Um, because we're government. Corson?
Yeah.
And we already have them.
Corson, Fastenal. Granger does it.
Who?
Granger.
Granger?
Yeah, there's all kind, a lot of these places that don't.
Oh, I'll get those.
Of course, it's getting outlawed and stuff.
I know, we have to say we go for Fastenal for ours.
I think it's included, but. So it'd be around twenty-five thousand, three hundred dollars for a three-year term period? Is the danger coming out in the front?
Five.
So we'll check around on that.
Yeah, maybe.
Yeah, I'll just tell it to the inflectments, see how, see how decisions are gonna combine.
Sure.
Even.
Appreciate it.
See what the batteries are.
Appreciate it, very much.
Comes like exactly those, A E Ds come from Reed. So.
That was it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Josh Russell went there.
Well, the guys, they all work at Reed, so.
I would say that's where these, that, the boxes, everything comes from Reed, probably about two years ago.
Those donated then.
Yeah. They even did the first round of batteries, I do believe, first second round. The first round, then we've had to buy the, the next ones.
So how much were they then?
What, the batteries?
About a hundred dollars. About a hundred dollars.
I say it's about my pace guy, they don't.
Currently online, they are one hundred and sixty-five bucks for a brand new battery, for one of those. So it doesn't include if we replace the A E D pads that are all expired? They roughly expire every three months, or if they're not used. Or at least ones that we had when I was on the annual test, but.
And he's. The brain name is Zolls. Does that make any sense to anybody? Zoll? Z O L, Zoll.
They're A E D slash retailer company.
It includes the, um, batteries, pads, inspection.
Yeah, you know what their inspection includes, right?
Me?
The up there with the little light on, it's lit up, check the date on the pad.
So I could do that. As long as it's not beeping anymore.
I don't know, the up there's a pair of ears and a car battery.
No volunteers.
What's on that?
No volunteers to do that.
Just real quick, before we go move to the citizens, um, all paid is, until I get the password, we can't use it.
What is it?
All paid, where you pay the utilities. You gotta get the password or code, which is it?
Password?
Password code to change the password. The code to change the password. Until I get that, I can, we can't use it. Just to have.
Utilities, like in water utilities, or?
It's for the credit card.
Okay. It's called what?
All paid. Do you wanna talk about Addison's? 'Cause all I'm gonna do is tell him that he better look at his property line. But if he doesn't own it.
Okay, we're just gonna run, we pick the renter.
Yeah, so who's responsible?
The, oh, the first one, first one is the renter, and then, or I guess if you said the owner, then.
If the renter doesn't pay, then the owner's responsible, since they rented to the, to the.
Do you know what we're talking about?
No more.
So, one or the other, they gotta pay.
So what is it, Addison?
Ordinance violation.
Addison, um.
Let's, well, let's, I, I suppose, let's just talk in generalities. Um, a couple things I, I would say specifically on that. The first is, one of the things you'll start to see a little more frequently, because we have been very ordinance violation focused recently, uh, you're gonna see some examples where people are gonna wanna come forward and be heard. There's not currently a policy in place for how that process goes. I would make a recommendation that you start thinking about that, maybe between now and the next meeting, 'cause people have a right to be heard, uh, and that's the direction that officers here in town are giving them. If there's a dispute or a disagreement with the town ordinance violation that's written to them, that they can come to town council and be heard. But I would also, you know, obviously first have to be heard, but then we probably want a little bit of a process so that we're not litigating the issue and, you know, I guess slowing the meeting down to a large extent, you know, uh, in that loop. But they do have the ability to come to town council. So I would be thinking about that in, in the short term, is what that process looks like, if they wanna be heard. And then, um, I guess, uh, as far as your question about, um, the property, I, I believe first, technically, ultimately, the responsibility would come down to the property owner, is what I've been, uh, advised by council, and that then technically they have to go back to their renter to get it.
So he would have to go to the renter and have it cleaned up? So, okay.
Not have it cleaned up, but I'm saying, so what's.
The owner.
Yeah, tech, yeah, exactly. At the end of the day, the owner is gonna be responsible for it. The owner of the property, the owner, the owner then has to go after his or her renter in order to, it could've been any, any issues. Now, that was the last conversation I had with, with, uh, the town attorney in reference to that specific question.
I'm a play the devil's hand.
It's like the property on South Street, you know, we went for the renters, but it ultimately wound up with the owners.
So we know that the owner's not doing anything, making the issue worse.
Okay, yeah, so in that case, I mean, in that case, it, it, I mean, the ordinance violation would stand, and if they, if at some point, if councils heard any, uh, arguments on behalf of the owner of the property and decided, no, the ordinance violation stands, then the next step is to go to court.
What? What, Rob?
Well, he said the key word. That's not something to be litigated. An ordinance violation is either a violation or it's not.
What we're talking about is.
They can go to court and do that. That's not something that's done here.
He is disputing that he got violated. He's a tenant.
Right, but he can dispute that in court.
And he got put, he got put on the agenda tonight here, and he didn't show up, so that's.
So he asked me if I could bring, it says Addison does not want to pay the fine due to picking up all the trash. And he asked me to do it, or say it for him, 'cause he's at work. So that's why I'm asking.
I mean, I'm sure he's welcome to come here and speak his, his piece, but it's not something that, that should be litigated in, um, in this venue. I mean, it's something, if he disputes the ordinance violation, and he would allow it to go to the courts, and then the court, the judge would decide on, would hear his argument and would decide.
We already have a process in place with, uh, Hagerstown Court for all of our fractions, and, um, so it shoots to the rise.
So would actually go back to the owner of that property?
The owner will, yeah, have to go to court.
So would be him to go to court, that renter.
If he was, if he got a viol, an ordinance violation, then yes, you, and didn't pay it, it's gonna keep accumulating, and then he's gonna go to court.
Right.
On property he doesn't own.
Can I say something?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you have a current interlocal agreement with Hagerstown, 'cause I don't think you do.
I should have, Sam. I just paid it.
No, it's nothing to pay. It's an agreement that all of you sign, that you can file tickets up there.
You did that one.
I don't think it's current, though, I think it, I think it expired in twenty-three, but I'm not sure.
How long does it take to get it kicked back in?
I can email it, and you guys can all sign it.
Email it to me, and I'll have it done.
So I think, Tom, we do have a, or, at least before, if someone wanted to speak at a, at a meeting, they could come in here and be added to the agenda, and you have like a five-minute timeframe.
Which was, the way I started the conversation, I would set a policy in place, or what, to Rob's point, what you're gonna have is, you know, people desperate to have their side, understandably heard by you all, are gonna have a temptation to sort of belabor issues that I, I don't think this is the, I think you all are in appropriate form to hear, listen, I have a dispute, I disputed it, and then I think you can simply address it, if you'd like to spend five minutes, set up a ten-minute limit, what have you, but, but, you know, if you start having two or three people that come in and want, and, and again, I, I believe it is their right to be heard, but I think we have to have some kind of.
Yeah, because coming to, they're just coming here to address it, because they can't, like, they're not gonna dispute it here, you can try to dispute all you want, but still, it's gonna be court.
Right, you don't want them, I mean, they can, like I said, they can come in here, but then you don't want them looking to the council then to make a decision on the ordinance, I mean, you can hear their argument, but all you can say is, you don't have to take it to court. You can't, because you can't change the ordinance on the spot, you know, for one particular resident, just because they came in and made an argument.
Yeah.
Take it to court, it's on Montana. I just advise to take it to court.
And then they get the court costs along with it.
You have to fight the ordinance in our court.
He did go straight to it, when, the last time he was in here, when he paid his water. He, uh, said something to Tom, and he went straight up there and.
But you know, we say that he doesn't own, he's not renting all that property.
But he cleaned it all up. But it's the, it's the, it's the fact that the owner is not cleaning up his property, and it's constantly rolling downhill, Jeanette knows. Literally downhill. So, I mean, he's getting violated for the ordinance. Both have?
Uh, only part of that, I'm sorry.
Both violated?
The, the property owner been violated, or more than violated, or got a?
That's a really confusing issue, because there happened to be both. Prop, if I understand, who owes that property? There's two separate properties, and both were violated for the condition of their individual properties.
So both of them depend on both?
But, yes.
Or they're just.
Both have.
Alright, so there's two violations, two citations.
Two separate residences that have been violated, and both have been warned previously, in writing.
So two separate residents. Same owner. And a tenant.
Yeah.
So the tenant has to battle the owner.
Yeah, yes.
And if it's, and if it does go to trial in our court, Tom would be there, the deputy prosecuting attorney would be there, the judge and the defendant.
Okay.
And it goes to trial, just like a trial.
Okay.
And then the defendant pays the court costs.
That's correct.
If they lose?
Yeah.
No.
I think anyway, they pay the court costs, if it goes to court, they pay the court costs.
And as you can imagine, we have a process, we have, we have just the right to witness.
Right.
Uh, we document the evidence.
It starts out as a small amount, and they let it snowball, and so.
It's a warning, and then it's another amount, and then another amount, and then another amount. Is there a cap to the amount, or does it keep rolling?
It's a cap made of court, isn't it?
If, you know, there's a couple of issues, one is. The repayment of the actual fine itself, and then also the, uh, abatement of the ordinance violation. So hypothetically, if they didn't fix the issue that they were written for, it would compound, and each time that you, after the period provided, it's either ten or fourteen days, e- each time technically, if they didn't fix the problem, they could continue to get.
Violated.
Violated, yes.
So this is his first violation, or is there's warning and a violation?
Warning and violation on both products.
So do it again. The only way it's gonna end.
If it hasn't been cleaned up.
And it's still.
Well, I, I live around there, and I believe that he, this owner has tried to, the renter has cleaned up.
So he needs to go, the owner needs to, for, one for each property.
How long has it been since I got the last one, though?
Has it been thirty days?
I have, I have.
Me too.
It depends on when they received the violation, and then certified, we don't say.
I'm sure I'll get a hundred phone calls, but. I would say the renter's property at this time is vast improvement.
I would agree, I would agree, I, I'm not comfortable writing that, I think, yet, at all.
Just go for the owner?
Yep. That's the only way it's gonna end, because like I said, and you know, it can't, it's just all, it's just, no, no. And it's all rolling downhill, it's not only affecting you, it's affecting him.
It affects me every year, so.
So it's probably affecting all your neighbors.
It does affect all my neighbors.
And again, there goes the property out of here.
Property value goes down, because the, you can't get across the people, that maybe there are owners that clean up, it doesn't matter.
It will matter, because now you're gonna get violated, and then they're gonna get fined. So it's a warning, and then violations from there out. If we put a cap on it and just take them straight to court? Or can we put a lien on their house, or can we do something to get it to stop? Or to get control of it?
Yeah, you put a lien on them, we're in trouble.
Well, I am the out of complaint about.
I already know. Ever since we've been. I already know, I already told them.
Yeah. Nothing yet.
I already know.
What's that word?
Trash? Nine or something.
On, on that cleanup, other municipalities will, will send out a warning that the town will come and clean it up themselves, and then send them a bill.
So who are we gonna get to do it?
That way, the problem's not just gonna keep perpetuating, and fines keep building up, that you know, and everything you're paying.
So then who do I send in to do that? Bruce and Teddy? To go clean it up?
Right, well, we'd have to, you have to check with legal counsel, as, as far as exactly how to proceed with that. But, you know, like Richmond, if, they'll come and mow your grass, and give you a weed warranty, and they'll give you a notice, and then they'll come and clean it up, and mow it, and then they'll send you a bill.
If you don't pay for it, then you get a lien out of your property.
Yeah.
Now, I will tell you, this can quickly become a full-time job as well. I mean, now you're starting to talk about code and code enforcement, and it can quickly become out of control, but, but, once again, Rob makes a valid point. At some point, you can ride into the policy that you, you can take care of it, and then send them a bill. In addition to the fine that they receive for the ordinance violation. And I know we've talked about it, each time we talk about ordinance violations, but it's worth reemphasizing, no one gets an ordinance violation without there being a discussion, or typically a written warning, so that there's never an opportunity for them to feel like, you know, hey, listen, this is out of the blue, why couldn't somebody have said something to me? So just, you know, know that, that we err on the side, every caution possible before we write someone.
Okay, let's move along, then, um, do, uh, I'd like to entertain a motion that we approved minutes from the last, I think we, everybody's gotta talk through.
Did we table, we're gonna table.
Yeah, we're gonna table that, sure.
I've gotta get some more closure, I only have one person in the back of this, so I, I'll go there. It only took, it only took me to get the stuff back about, but, um.
She's not real fast.
What did I have to get over on that? All the South Street, it only, it took me eight days.
And he never got back on the phone, huh?
No. No, it's horrible. Let's go. Wouldn't take you ten seconds to get my, my. It's amazing. How many years?
I don't know.
I'm pretty sure it was told to me twenty-seven years. Have we been pleased that ever? That they've been representing?
I've never seen this here.
I think it's only this here, that the company has been representing this town for twenty-seven years. I don't know if the other, there were issues before, I have no idea.
Well, there's another town that just did away with them because they weren't showing up.
That's how I feel right now, it takes forever.
He's the reason why I can't.
I'm sorry.
I, no, I'm not blaming him, you know, at all, it's just, I thought he was supposed to be here.
Yeah.
If you can't get him to do what he's supposed to do, that's out of, out of your hands.
Okay, so did we get a motion to approve the minutes?
Yeah.
Go ahead, I'll start then.
All favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carried. Now I'd like to entertain a motion that we pay the claims for last month. Second, all favor, aye. All opposed. Motion carried. Okay, before we make the motion to adjourn, does anybody have anything else that they'd like to get off their chest?
I wanna ask about sidewalks. Uh, we got a grant, didn't we? Have you heard any more about when they all start doing the sidewalks?
Rob's getting quotes now, getting surprises, uh, the money's sitting there, once we get things, quotes and get proof.
Well, I was told, only the people that have a sidewalk in front of their house will get a sidewalk.
Well, these guys will decide where they go, once we get the quote.
Well, because, uh, I watched some young girl walk in, and she tripped and fell in one in front of our house, because it's sticking up, and I don't wanna be in trouble with that sidewalk. Because somebody told me I could be responsible for it too. Well, we can't, we're senior citizens, we can't get the little one on that sidewalk, and it's like that when we bought.
We are responsible, I mean, to keep the snow off and stuff like that.
Oh, why, is that homeowner? So are we, the homeowner responsible to replace all cracked and broken?
Not replace.
Well, see, this is one that is part of it's broke, and sticking up.
Mine are too.
And I have to make several comments about it, because it, if somebody falls and really hurts herself.
We put the pieces of ours back when they get kicked out of the, taken.
Well, part of it, it's blocked, it can't even block that one right now.
The town that we came from, they trained a couple of their city employees on how to pour the concrete and replace, do all that, so the homeowner applies, they pay for the cost of the cement, and then the city does the work. I don't know if that's possible, but.
But you're asking senior citizens that don't have that much money to handle that?
So if we didn't get this grant, we'd still have broken sidewalks.
Yeah, but who's responsible, did somebody, it's for a mess.
And whose lane is it on? Is it my lane? Then I'm responsible? Is it my lane, I'm responsible, how, am I out to the middle of the street? Do I own out to the middle of the street?
Yeah, but the town has the right of way.
But the town has the right of way, so they should be responsible.
So, who's responsible to repair these sidewalks that are broken if we didn't have this grant?
The municipality is responsible for sidewalks. Uh, homeowner, residents are responsible for maintaining it, keeping it free of ice and snow.
Well, we do that, yeah.
Yeah, but the town is responsible for replacing broken sidewalks.
So the town has allowed this to get to this position?
Yes, I've asked, like I said, for eleven years now. I bet that's my bad.
Is there like a tree root or something pushing it up, like trees?
There is trees pushing it?
No, no, I don't think there's, there's no trees.
It shifts, everything shifts sometimes.
I think it's just the.
Old. Mine was in nineteen oh eight, it's stamped.
All of the sidewalks are like that.
Except the ones.
Yeah, yeah. Mine, the one that leads right into my gate is stamped nineteen oh eight.
It's pretty good, but it's not the cut old.
But, yeah.
Everyone actually wants priorities.
Concrete's expensive.
What are the, um, estimates?
Well, I, that's, town is back, and it's starting to crack the steps. But, they put those, they put those sidewalks on it, didn't they, in the sewers, didn't they? When they, well, when they revitalize them, they're, I wonder if they're still liable for that.
Well, when they do the water line, they're gonna have to break one of ours out.
Have you been down in front of my house?
Yeah, I've seen it.
The one that goes, two, two plates, two in the front door. I'm dealing with it, because they're cleaning it up.
Off the level?
Go ahead, Rob.
One is sinking, one pile's sinking.
Probably already cracked down through there.
Um, patch, probably. Unfortunately. So Rob has some, uh, quotes?
Yeah, I, well, I had, uh, appointment for three concrete contractors to come out and give us a price on sidewalks. After the first one came out, uh, I walked with them, and so many questions came up, I stopped the other two from coming out. Uh, because here's the, here's the thing, we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars available just for sidewalk replacement. We don't know how much that'll get us. So the way I was gonna handle it was, I was gonna just have each con, contractor tell them, we have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, how much sidewalk, and, and set the parameters, and then they can tell us how much sidewalk they can do for that hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So Terry, when you walk around with that one guy, I forget what his name was, but his name here, is it going to start one block out?
Well, this is one of the questions, the council needs to decide what, where, you have to prioritize what sidewalks are getting done, first of all. Where do you wanna start with sidewalks? Because we're not gonna be able to do them all, so you gotta start somewhere. So that was one of the questions. When I, when that contractor came out, we walked Main Street, east and west. Just because Central's done, the sacred Central, and then this is the main, you know, you got Main Street. To me, start in the center of town and do what we can, and do what you can.
I agree with that.
So, we walked Main, we walked Main Street.
It's not a heavily trafficked area, that's the thing, you gotta think about that, these are kids, this is constant walking. Side streets, my street.
So we went east and west, and then some other questions came up, do we want curbs? Because some places, the, the green space just goes right out to the asphalt in the road, do you want curbs? What about driveways and alley entrances? Is that gonna be, except for, if some of the vehicles go driveway? You gotta decide whether you're gonna do just the sidewalk through that driveway and/or alley, or do you have to have a poured concrete entrance to that?
Well, just like in front of my house.
So that was another question.
That was great. It's not even the driveway, we made it a driveway.
And one of them told me, well, there's too many, talk about, there's too many variables to get it, they wouldn't give you a square foot price, because there's too many things that change. Like if you start walking west here on Main Street, you get green space, uh, the road, green space, and then sidewalk, and then you get to this house next door here, and the concrete goes all the way up to the house. So, you know, that's why you have to decide where and what, and how that's gonna be. In order, really, to get accurate pricing. Because none of them wanna give me a square foot price.
Some of the stuff they do is just walk through this pile.
Yeah, and decide whether you want curves. Because it's, you know, curving.
The thing is, you start shooting curving in there, and then that's gonna eat it up.
Yes.
But even after this grant's gone, your N V H restricted, you don't have to use on sidewalks.
Not curves.
Not curve, if they total reconstruct it, and, uh, all you're printed out a sheet explaining sidewalks. So, you know, it's not a lot every year, but it is something to work with.
So we need to figure out where we wanna start, where we wanna, how far we wanna go. When they were digging. When they were digging for the, would like us to stay in.
That, I don't like going that far.
No, we won't. We're gonna get a block. We're gonna get blocks. Each way, on me.
I mean, we might just have to do a section, and if this section looks good, we'll let it skip it, and, you know, we just do the.
Do the broken.
Just repair.
The worst ones.
Yeah, that's a, that's a question you guys need to decide. You know, do you want to just go around town and where there are the worst sections, just replace those sections? Or no?
Well, a lot of big towns would go and just patch.
Right.
They don't do the whole side, whole block. They, they're in there doing patching along, it means ADA compliant.
I think these are in, it's probably a good idea to get more done.
So then, my question is, if they do the ones that are broken now, that are in really bad shape, because there's some out there. Are they gonna make all the corners ADA compliant?
They change it.
You would probably, you would probably have to.
If it went to, if a sidewalk went to the corner, yeah. You don't want to have to go back and tear it up because you weren't ADA compliant.
Yeah, they would have to be ADA compliant. If not, we would make them have, that would be something that would, I would think.
The state would come back in and say.
That we would have to make ADA compliant.
Yeah, I thought they said that, and they were actively doing that.
Yeah, if you start messing with a new house.
So anywhere that you decide to do construction, if they have a corner on this, that goes to the street, that's gonna be part of it? To make it ADA? So this patch is broke, and my corner's right here, you're gonna replace that corner also? To make it ADA compliant?
Well, and that's what I'm saying, if you want to just go around town and, and to, to patchwork, fix the worst spots. Anywhere where it runs to a corner, you're gonna have to do an ADA, accessible corner.
If we go from the middle, if we go to the middle, start here and do the edge.
I said we start at the ADA. Because how many, I mean, there are a lot of handicapped and senior citizens in this town. I understand our sidewalks are trash. I get it.
Well, a lot of them can't get across the road and track in front of the road, it's like, you know. It's been that way for years.
And there's sidewalk that's buried up here. And Bruce has asked me if we can bury it. I didn't know if it was our responsibility.
It's probably the road track. The road comes to pass.
On it by my brother.
See, part of my sidewalk is buried into the grass. And then in between Sharon's house and ours, there's a big space, there's no sidewalk. Just her.
There probably is, it's probably sinking in.
Yeah, it's probably buried there, yeah. But when you come up to mine, mine comes up, and then this piece is sticking up, and this is down here. You go a little bit further, and this one's sticking up, and this one's down here.
So I get it, mine's trashed too.
Yeah, but somebody's gonna get hurt on it, and it probably.
Okay, does anyone else have anything?
Do we need to decide? Do we need to decide right now?
No.
No.
Well, you can't go out and determine which, where they patch and still maintain ADA compliant.
You know, you could have, uh, maybe Bruce go around and decide where the worst sidewalks are and how.
There's doesn't have to be people park on the sidewalks either. That tears up a sidewalk.
Gee, that's a good one, Bruce.
Yeah. That's our word. Because it's part of my driveway that I made.
Oh, well, I'm not talking about.
But it is.
I've never noticed yours.
You can't see it.
Yeah, okay.
There's this much of a lip to the, from the asphalt down into my driveway. And I, and then you can't see the sidewalk because I parked on it. It's just so nobody takes out my mirror.
We got grass, sidewalk, grass.
Yeah, we got.
Yeah, the problem I, I see, I have seen without curbing is you can drive a vehicle right off the street, right onto the sidewalk and crack.
Yeah.
So, you know, to, in my mind, to replace sidewalks and not do curbing, you're asking for trouble, because I think they're just gonna get driven on and cracked in and repainted. The curbing, curbing itself is gonna take up a chunk of the sidewalk.
Is that grant gonna be picked up all again?
We're investigating, but it's not definite yet.
I mean, they're gonna help out, that's all I'm gonna say.
Which you can't use, but.
It doesn't count at this point, nothing counts.
The district said you can't use, can't use the money for curbs, sidewalks open.
It has to be total reconstruction, tearing it out.
To use like for curbs.
So at my house, if they tore all out, if they're all broke, they could.
They could, for a total reconstruction, yeah, but then your car can be out of route.
Okay, let's move on. This gentleman has something to say.
Hi Ken. My name is Ken, K E N, last name Meng, M E N G. Uh, I'm glad to be here and speak with our neighbors. I'm not sure we're, uh, old residents or new residents, because we moved here already over a year. And the last time our family joined the meeting was a year ago. And I'm happy to see new faces, council members, and, and officers of our community. Thank you very much. And I'd like to introduce, um, our church. And during this year, uh, last year, I planned to open the church, just mentioned about the, the old train station. Across the railroad, that's the church, and we opened the church. The name of the church is Church of Jesus Christ Milton. And this is a branch of the, during this year, we opened the church in Pennsylvania. And there is our main church and called, uh, the city called Charleroy. So the name is, uh, what, uh, the name is Church of Jesus Christ Charleroy, Pennsylvania. And this is the main church. And, uh, since the, in the winter, uh, we don't have the budget to fix the heating system, so we closed it temporarily. And we are going to open it, uh, in this year after Easter, Sunday. So it will be, uh, uh, April seventh. And we will reopen, and we invite everyone to go to the, that church, that kind of old church, one hundred and fifty years ago. And, but I, I know the church is very important for our neighbor's descendants. And we keep the records very well, and we have a lot of records there, and I won't dump anything. So that's a really, really impressive thing over there. So I know how important the church is. So right now, we opened the church, and we just tried to do about the same thing as we, what we are, we are doing in Pennsylvania. And right now, we have around thirty members there. And, um, from beginning, the church members, they come down here, they just used to listen to other people's speech. And then they, they just listen and go, they don't have time to talk. But I encourage people to read scriptures and think about it, power of man, and how to use the scripture to your own life. This is kind of different, so people start to, um, realize they need to think in their self and use their spirit to do things. So people, before, they have some, uh, conflict there, and they're fighting each other, but later on, they love one another. So we saw the, the improve, that, that, you know, people improve, that, that's the, the thing, our Lord happy. So, um, also, we serve communities, and we teach the new immigrants that come down. There are a lot of people from Haiti. They don't speak English, and we teach them, I don't teach, I don't speak English also. So, uh, we have some people teach them English and help their life. And, uh, probably, uh, we don't have much new immigrants in this town. And, uh, I, I just try to pick out how we can help the neighbors. And maybe later on, you can find, you know, some, some way you can help the neighbors. And on the day, and before that, I, I want to talk the, the two pictures, so we just shared. You know, uh, first picture was, uh, uh, the logo of the old town. And when I saw it, then tweet showed, uh, tweet, tweet showed up, and wow, who designed that? It's a kind of, you know, um, eastern culture. You know, Chinese people, they think the highway is wrong. And the land is square. So that, I, I saw it, the, the design is just the same as that. And so let me, um, the thing, like me, to think about the human thinking. Actually, in our spirit, everybody has spirit, and we know something. Even some people from east, some people from west, but we have the same spirit from God. So we know that. So that's why I saw the picture, I was surprised, oh, that's great. Another thing is, um, the history of our, our hometown, you know, the, the train station. And, uh, we can see the ancient design, and the people praising, and the people, how the people look like. And those pictures, I love those pictures. And the church was a hundred and fifty years ago, the church. And they're vile, and I like to ring the vial. And, uh, maybe it's enlightening some people to think about God, and think about old church, how that church served people, and they people love one another. So we keep our town, and right now it's so safety, and a very good town, you know. Thank you very much. I, I take too much time, and the people suffering my, 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 my translation, my accent. And we invite, I, I will ask Tom to, um, it's okay to pass the invitation to everyone. And everybody invited to the, the church, church opening, formal, formal opening, actually. On, uh, April seventh, at, at one twelve afternoon. After that, church, you can come to church and have some lunch on, and everybody welcome. Thank you very much, and I love everyone, I love our neighbors. Thank you.
Tom, are you cooking?
Are you cooking, Ian?
We cook, we cook together. We're burning.
Heather, they're cooking.
Thank you.
And, uh, Wade went to China, like ten years ago, right?
Yeah. Yeah, with, for over ten years.
Uh, yeah, and he went many places in China, but I already left China thirty, thirty-two years, thirty-two years before. I moved from China to the United States. And I have three sons born here, and the first son born in Hawaii. And this is the little one, and the second son, and him, born in Los Angeles. And during about twenty years I was in the United States, I just drew words, general words, but. Then I don't feel learn much things, but after that, about five years ago, I started a service community in Los Angeles. You know, I don't speak much English, but good things about Chinese people there. And, uh, we had some activities to change the communities.
Maybe playing the piano?
Oh, sure.
Good.
He's good.
Thank you very much, and maybe, yeah.
Thank you, Pete.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Okay, if, if nobody else has anything, I entertain a, a problem.
I, I just, I'm gonna throw this idea out there, you're gonna probably think it's nuts. But, you know, since ninety percent of people in town didn't even know this was the bicentennial year. And we have all this stuff going on with the water lines and that equipment, and a big mess over there. And then there's, uh, big plans to fix up that park over there this year, which won't happen till at least mid to late summer. What about just postponing this celebration till next year? Because as, as Dwight said, you know, we should have had a, a good year to prepare for this.
So why would you, um, delay something that, that when they actually become two hundred years old this year?
Well, you could call it the bicentennial plus one, I don't care. Just, uh, just an idea, like I said, you probably think it's nuts, but I think the celebration itself could be better. Because now, uh, you, everybody's kind of scrambling, and we can't get the people we want, and you're gonna have, we can't get everything that it could be. Is, I guess, what I'm saying. So it's just an idea, you know, since, I don't think it's gonna matter to people one way or another. I think it would be better if it were next year, because all that mess would be gone. The work on the park would be better, it'd be a place for kids to, we're gonna, there's gonna be playthings for kids, the basketball court's gonna be done. It, that, that area would be much better to have the celebration.
We can stop doing speakers, though, can't we, at the gazebo area?
We, yeah, there is a list of speakers.
Isn't that where you're gonna do those?
Yeah. I mean, we do have a list of speakers, um, right now, that's going to come in and tell what they know about Milton. And I don't disagree, this should have started long before now. We're trying to push things forward and honor the fact that, you know, July sixth.
Yeah, there needs to be some kind of recognition this year.
Right.
At the gazebo. We don't have to do it on the school lot, do we?
Yeah, it's finding alternative places. I mean, we got the gazebo, it's got electric in it. You could do, so, and it's the only place in town that's got a flagpole other than the fire department. So how do you flag raising ceremony if you don't have a flagpole?
We need to get a flag fixed, too.
Yeah, we're working on that.
Most people don't know that you can't have a, a faded flag or any other flag bigger than the American flag, which is.
Is that how it is there at the gazebo?
The American flag is smaller. They can be the same size, but no other flag is supposed to be larger than the American flag.
Are they done?
Yeah.
You're on my list.
And if you fly them like by different poles, no other flag can fly higher than the American flag. But if it's on the same pole, no flag should be larger. I'm surprised you haven't heard from the M V S or the American Legion over that.
Well, it's, anyway, it's just an idea, I thought I'd throw it out there. Well, one thing, whenever we, when we have a celebration, we don't want to make, make it hard selling it. It's celebrating the anniversary of founding Milton. That's, that's the main thing. I've been getting, how about every other day, I get a comment from somebody, I need a tape recorder on, you know, what they think. I think we need to go ahead and make it as best we can. You know, and then, once again, when next year comes, will be two hundred, one years old, we go for it again. By that time, we should have more, the property should be in much better shape, like you're saying. My blood pressure's going down, it's for the next.
No, we have to start on it now.
Yeah, that's, no, thanks, you had to reget it. So, no, I mean, it's. I don't have a problem with doing it now.
I'd say we move on with it now.
We will just get better.
So we'll have a two hundred year old.
Right.
So you're saying the speakers, I think, you tell next year.
Well, next year, you would have. Yeah, we have people who play music, more.
Okay, we got a lot to think about.
I'll throw another one out, I'll check. That's what I'm good about.
Waiting to the last second.
Yeah, I have to hear the last word.
Can't get that adjourned.
Has anybody investigated with the state and getting a state signing put up in front of the schoolyard? Where it says Milton's planted this day, a little bit of history.
Perfect. When do we have that ready? When will you have that ready?
I mean, there, I mean, if you go down Florida, often Cambridge City, there's all kinds of plaques there. Why didn't Milton idea one years ago? I mean, I don't know who drives it. Is it the state, or does the town have to drive the state to do that?
Does Dublin have it, or does Persia have it?
I don't know.
Does Persia have any? Sudan? Does Persia, Persia, Persia do it? State? There you go, like, there's your connection, state.
Oh, you make it so easy.
This is a national broom.
Yeah.
There you go, measure. So what, isn't there something outside at the old, um, park building? That sign, that's the sign that I'm talking about, in laying brick.
Putting bricks over there.
Over at the park.
So you're just talking about the, like, when you're coming into town, this is Milton, the Sabbath law.
Right, it gives a little history on there. Right, it gives a little history on there.
Uh, I, I'll ask about it tomorrow, look, I think I'll office.
Do you have an inside track?
Yeah.
I mean, it's, you know, because when you look at Milton, it was being founded in this, how it's got its name, Milton Town, with all the hills and series, and it's now coming through. I mean, it was gonna be number one until they decided, oh, you have too much swamp grounds, we're gonna move a mile north, and it ended up in Cambridge City.
The picture, my...
There were doctors' offices and factories.
Mine house was a doctor's office.
Funeral.
Casket factory across the street.
There was a, when there a factory where the fire department is?
Yeah.
Fire factories, yeah.
And gas factory.
This was the grocery store.
The dance halls, the dance halls.
The one, it was before it got that, yeah, before it got that.
I remember when they could go up there, when the grocery store was there, when I was a kid. Okay, I entertain the motion that we adjourn.
Okay, I'll turn that, I'll turn that off.
Don't run over each other.
Or maybe we say, uh, all right, motion carried, adjourned.